Yeah, it's right here. Good evening, Littleton. Welcome to the Select Board meeting for December 20th, 2021. First order of business this evening is an executive session, so we will be going into executive session, and then, once we conclude our executive session, we'll be coming back out. We anticipate coming back out of executive session, the open session at 6:30. So entertain a motion to enter executive session?
I move that the Select Board vote pursuant to Mass. General law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A 6, to go into executive session to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property if the Chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body, and the Chair so declares, and to convene an open session thereafter.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. The Chair does so declare. It is a hybrid. So, actually, well, not hybrid.
Sorry, can I make a final amendment to the motion? Could you please invite Joe, Anthony, and myself, and then also identify the property that's subject to the negotiation, which is the Nagog Hill Orchard property?
Okay, so amended. Identify Anthony Ansaldi and Joe Layden, and I'm sorry.
It's up to E. Frieder, Town Council's office.
Thank you.
All right, so I'll entertain that motion as amended. The Chair does so declare. Mr. Knox?
Aye.
Mr. Nortos?
Aye.
Ms. Napoli?
Aye.
And Chairs in favor. So, we are unanimous, folks. We're going to go into executive session. We will be back, hopefully, about 6:30.
I flipped the switch, didn't I?
You did.
Didn't I flip it?
Mm-hmm.
It's on.
Thank you. Oh, we are. Welcome back, Littleton, to the Select Board meeting for December 20th.
Mr. Chairman, I know you haven't started the meeting.
Gino.
May I say something?
Please, can we open the meeting?
He's starting the meeting. Oh, he waits one second.
He's giving a host.
Gino, come on. This is protocol. Please.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
You're leaving away.
I will.
Okay.
So, thank you for your patience, folks. We did have a little bit longer of an executive session than we had anticipated. We do have a bit of a full agenda tonight, but we, as we always do, would like to start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Let's go to the ladies, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
All right, next up on our agenda, we have, well, I'll go through the whole agenda real quick. So, we have Reading of the Mail, and then, item number three on our agenda is Town Council will be working with us on ABCC licensing update on opioid litigation. Elder and Human Services acceptance of some donations, which is fantastic. They just keep rolling. Conservation Agent requests some support for Mass. Trails 2022 grant. We have Sustainability Committee to discuss mission of the North Central Climate Change Collaborative. We have Veteran Services to accept a donation. LCTV is here to discuss the Verizon contract. The Police Department will be here to discuss the request for ARPA funding to hire a new police officer. We will have an opportunity for public input and member updates around 7:00, 7:10. We do ask that if you do want to be recognized, you do raise your hand and be recognized by the Chair. Any comment should come through the Chair, and I just ask that you would come forward to the podium and identify yourself and your address. After public input, we will do our member updates. Then, we have a whole bunch of licenses to approve. We've got some Select Board discussion on a couple different topics. Then, we have Town Administrator, Assistant Town Administrator updates, some public building reserve fund transfer requests, signature of a deed, a warden on call, basically an HVSE contract, update on some multi-family zoning requirements for MBTA communities, and then we'll approve some minutes from December 6th. I anticipate being adjourned sometime around 8:05. And, at this point, Mr. Ansaldi, if you've got the mail, we'll take it.
Sure, thank you, Chair. Just two small things. We received a letter from 495 Metro West Partnership, just to thank you for Littleton's continued participation. And the other letter that we received is from Xfinity Programming, your addition of Fuse HD and the ACC Network. And the third item will postpone until the next meeting.
Thank you, Chair. All right. So, from Town Council, we have Iria Fried to discuss some litigation update.
So, I can start with the opioid litigation. So, as many of you might be aware, there's a class action lawsuit involving numerous cities and towns throughout the United States suing manufacturers of different versions of opioids. And there was an original lawsuit that ended up creating a settlement fund, and states across the United States started to figure out how they were going to allocate funds that they were going to receive from this settlement pool. And so, cities and towns that want to receive those funds, that believe they have faced some type of harm from the opioid epidemic, may participate in the settlement process to getting access to the funds. So, what you are being asked tonight is whether the Town of Littleton believes that they have been harmed by the opioid epidemic, whether that means increased EMT services, had to acquire Narcan, you know, we can increase mental health services for opioid addicts, you know, we can kind of talk about that. Then, we can enroll in the settlement, and based on an algorithm, which is yet to be determined, but currently being negotiated, the Town of Littleton could receive funds. Now, I put asterisks by all of this because there was a recent lawsuit, you know, that decision had been appealed, and a court overturned the original decision in part. So, we're not sure what the pool of funds will actually look like at the end of the day, but to the extent that Littleton wants to participate at all, and believes that they were harmed by this epidemic, we would need to enroll by January 2nd. And so, the motion on the table would be to authorize Anthony to sign up the Town of Littleton. The, if you do agree to participate in the settlement, you couldn't, as a community, independently sue any of these manufacturers. Doesn't seem like something that, something that, you know, doesn't seem something that Littleton has an appetite to do right now, but that's something you would be giving up, is your ability to independently sue these manufacturers. I'm happy to answer any questions. It's a lot of unknowns at this point in time.
Any questions from the Board? No.
I do.
What's the threshold that would determine or quantify being harmed?
There is none.
There is none?
Yeah.
Okay. So, just as far as we can talk to the Fire Department, are the EMT responses, Elder and Human Services has done a lot of work to combat the opioid crisis, so we can quantify all those numbers in some shape?
So, it's unclear on whether we're going to have to. So, there's a couple of different ways on how the algorithm is being figured out. There's kind of an understanding that all communities have been harmed in some form by the opioid epidemic, municipalities have had to spend funds in many different ways. Fire Department EMTs have had to do, Narcan has had to acquire Narcan, and doses that surpassed prior, you know, prior opioid, prior issues. But, you know, so there's one algorithm where you just will get a set amount based on your population size.
Okay.
There's another algorithm where you'll have to justify your harm. It's all being negotiated. We don't know which option they're going to go with, or even a hybrid, where you get a base amount, and if you believe that you are owed additional funds, you can submit further documentation. We just don't know at this point, and then with this more recent lawsuit, we don't even know what the funding will look like. So, I think the question just is, do you want to be part of it at this point? And if the answer to that question is yes, then we enroll, and we kind of go with it one step at a time. I do know that there is, you know, most communities in the Commonwealth are participating in the settlement process.
Okay, yep. I thought we had already done this, but...
I think we have, but there have been some changes, right?
Was it different lawsuit? It was against a pharmaceutical?
Purdue was the first one, I think.
So, yes, it was similar. It was, this is also expanding to different distributors, but what's happening now is you're going to also give up your rights to independently sue. Before, you were just interested in learning about the settlement and enrolling in, in the option to be part of it. Now, you're actually enrolling. And, you know, I think our office is just frustrated with this process because the information is changing daily. The AG's office is not being as communicative as we would like, and so sometimes we think we know what's happening, and then, you know, changes. As Anthony knows, I think I sent him, like, 12 emails in one day about this. So, at this point, you know, this is the information we have.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, E. Fried. Any other questions? It's the Pledge of the Board.
Aye.
See no harm in going forward.
I agree.
You're staying the course?
Right.
Enroll.
Move that the Select Board vote to authorize a Town Administrator to enroll the Town of Littleton in two settlements resolving all opioid litigation brought by states and local political subdivisions against McKesson Cardinal Health, AmerisourceBergen, and Janssen Pharmaceuticals, Inc., and its parent company Johnson &amp; Johnson, and to execute and submit the subdivision settlement participation forms by January 2nd, 2022, to the Attorney General's office.
Second.
That's another house, second by Mr. Knox. All those, oh, are you going to bring? It's not available. He's not up yet.
Yeah, he said that by the 7.
Okay. Ms. Napoli?
Aye.
Mr. Nortos?
Aye.
Mr. Knox?
Aye.
Chairs in favor, so it's unanimous. E. Fried, thank you very much for that, and I think we have the ABCC issue.
Yep. So, as you're also aware, because of the census, the ABCC has recalculated how many liquor licenses each community is permitted to issue based upon the new population data. Through that process, it was discovered that the ABCC believes we have licenses through special legislation that we do not have. Special legislation meaning special acts. So, as this Board might remember, we did get additional package store license for the common area through a special act process. The ABCC believed we also had a retail restaurant license and a package store license for wine and beer only through a special act process that we never engaged in. After talking to the ABCC, we realized that that error was because there was a box incorrectly checked on Salute's application. So, in order to fix that, we need to resubmit initial documentation around their license application. So, what we're asking for you tonight is to just approve the revised application materials, so we can send them to the ABCC to correct this error. There's nothing changing on Salute's license. It's just an administrative task that the Board needs to actually sign these forms, but nothing's changing with their license structure.
Great. No questions on this matter?
No. Move that the Select Board vote to approve the corrected licensing certificate forms for Salute, Inc., on premises and off premises liquor licenses as presented to the Board.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Nortos, seconded by Ms. Napoli. Roll call vote. Ms. Napoli?
Aye.
Mr. Nortos?
Aye.
Mr. Knox?
Aye.
Chairs in favor, it's unanimous. E. Fried, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Your travels.
So, and for the Board, those are being distributed around. There's a total of four pages that you'll be signing.
Thank you.
And Joe, I think Diane's going to send me this off tomorrow.
Yes.
Okay, I'll just follow up with her.
Next again.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Okay, so next up.
Acceptance of donations from the Elder and Human Services Department, blisters tending to matters upstairs, helping the resident. But, they received two donations, $7,500 from the Henry Vincent Cooper Charitable Fund, which will go to the Energy Assistance Program, and $1,500 from the Gore Charitable Foundation, that will also go towards the Energy Assistance Program.
Fantastic.
I move that the Select Board vote pursuant to Mass. General law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, and per its policy on solicitation and acceptance of monetary and non-monetary gifts for public purpose, to accept donations to the Department of Elder and Human Services, EHS, COA, Energy Assistance Program, from the Henry Vincent Cooper Charitable Fund in the amount of $7,500, and from the Gore Charitable Foundation in the amount of $1,500.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Nortos, seconded by Ms. Napoli. Roll call vote. Mr. Knox?
Aye.
Mr. Nortos?
Aye.
Ms. Napoli?
Aye.
Chairs in favor, it's unanimous. Great. Thank you very much, Anthony. Again, it's just the community that keeps on giving. It's fantastic. Conservation Agent? Amy?
Amy's got it.
Amy's got it. Good evening, Amy Green, Conservation Agent. I am here to ask your support for Samyia Grant to Mass. Trails for a boardwalk that would basically help connect town forests through Hurgay and down to Balsam. The grant is up to $50,000, but I don't think this will approach that. And there is a 20% match required, which I think can pretty easily be met either by volunteer labor on doing the planking on the top of the boardwalk and/or highway, helping to construct a little parking lot off of Balsam.
Great.
I talked to one contractor who is going to give me a pricing on it, so, and then I'll be talking to another one, so I have some better ideas of what to go after the grant. But, in the process of going for the grant, I realized that the town does not officially own, I think it's called Parcel X, the K Parcel, which is between those two red dots, basically, that you see up there. The yellow, the town does own, and I apologize for these graphics, but Parcel X, I believe, was approved for acceptance at town meeting, but has not been a final approval from the Select Board to accept it.
And that's going to be on our agenda later on tonight.
Okay. Quickly indeed. Okay, thank you. Amy, thank you for that. Any questions of Amy?
No.
No? Pleasure of the Board.
Yes, please. I move that the Select Board vote to support the Conservation Commission's preparation of a Mass. Trails grant application.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Roll call vote. Mr. Knox?
Aye.
Aye.
Chairs in favor. It's unanimous again.
Thank you very much. Do you need me to stick around for the later vote, or I might go ahead?
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next up, we have Sustainability Committee to discuss...
Yes, so Renato should be...
Online?
Online, yes.
Just elevating him?
Okay.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for having me here.
Thank you for being here.
So, Sustainability Committee was invited by, sorry, my name is Renato Nakagomi. I'm the Chair of Littleton Sustainability Committee, 49th and 30th. So, the North Central Climate Change Collaborative, NC4, invited us to be part of that organization. Nowadays, of course, the organization is still being created, but a lot of towns already attended those meetings, the initial meetings, and we would like to invite a member, members of the Select Board to participate with us in order to define their goals, and just participate in the meetings in general, to obtain knowledge. It's like, it's more like an organization to exchange knowledge regarding how to fight climate change. And that's, we are going to those meetings, like, every month right now. There are only three meetings for now, but we would like to invite a member of the Select Board to participate with us.
Great. Thanks, Renato. Anybody have any questions?
Do you have a, do you have a preference for which mission? I'm not sure I really understand why one of them omits the cooperation with the federal government, and one, you know?
Version one or version two?
Yeah.
Oh, the mission, yeah. So, they, so there's a lot of things going on right now. So, actually, they still couldn't decide if they're going to be an intermunicipal group, like a government group, ruled by open law, open meeting laws, or if they're going to be a non-governmental group, that is, like, a nonprofit or something like that. So, the mission statement is still on hold because they are reaching out to Lori Trehan and other representatives for, for, as legal advisor, legal advisory. So, they're trying to figure out which kind of organization they will be, and then they try to define their mission. So, that's why we are, we're not asking to support any mission now, because we still don't really know what are they, they're planning to do. So, we just, we would like to have one member of the Select Board, invite a member of the Select Board to participate, so we can discuss together those issues.
This is, this is right up my alley, but I don't think that I can commit to another group. I have too many going on right now, or just enough, maybe. And so, I'm sorry to say, I'm going to have to pass on this one.
Anybody else have any good interest?
I just don't have the other commitments right now, unfortunately.
Well, the interest of meeting Renato's ask, I'll step forward and volunteer. Renato, this is Chuck. I'll be your, your appointee from the Select Board, as long as these guys will have me, and you'll have me.
Oh, sure. Thank you.
I assume we have to make an appointment, or?
I think it's just to participate. I'm not sure that it's a committee.
Right.
It's just to join, right, Renato, with the other?
Collaborative?
Yeah, it's just, so, it started with the, so, there's, it started with the Pepperell Select Board. So, Pepperell Select Board is already there. It's there. And it's just to join the meetings and see what they're doing, and to bring ideas and to discuss subjects. And at some point, they will define everything, and then also, they also ask for the towns that participate in this group to support actions, or letters, or policies, or whatever. So, it would be good to have a town representative from our town, like, to be there to listen to them.
Okay.
And participate and give ideas also.
Okay, I believe I've got your email address, Renato, so I'll send you an email, so you can kind of get me in the loop.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for all your effort. Okay, next up, we have Veteran Services, another donation.
I guess I will take this. We have a donation that was given to John Borowski for veterans' assistance from Masala Bay in the amount of $1,000.
Nice. From a local restaurant.
Let's keep coming. Move that the Select Board vote pursuant to Mass. General law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, and per its policy on solicitation and acceptance of monetary and non-monetary gifts for public purpose, to accept a donation to the Veteran Services Department from Masala Bay Restaurant in the amount of $1,000 for veteran assistance.
Second.
Motion made, seconded by Ms. Napoli. Sorry, Joe. Roll call vote. Ms. Napoli?
Aye.
Mr. Nortos?
Aye.
Mr. Knox?
Aye.
And Chairs in favor. It's unanimous. Thank you very much.
I'm going to have that motion memorized before too long.
Just in time.
Yeah.
All right, next up, we've got...
I want to say yes on that, too.
Oh, there you are.
Mr. Galavy. It's fully unanimous. Are you under a bridge?
No, this is much less dramatic. Back at home, home.
Good to hear. All right, next up, we do have the LCTV Advisory Committee.
Yes, this is something that, I think I listed it as a contract approval. I know Bill and the committee's been working really hard to try to get it accomplished. Let's see what the update is.
Is he still even under?
Okay, I'm not sure what he said. I couldn't quite hear it, to be honest with you with all the masks. My name's Bill Vales. I'm the Chairman of the Littleton Community TV Advisory Board, and, you know, hello to the Select Board, hello to the administrators. If you recall, on December 6th, presented to you the PAD, or Preliminary Assessment of Denial for the Verizon License, and as part of the PAD, we had 14 days, you have 14 days, to provide reasons for why the denial was issued. The reasons have been sent to you. We do not have an agreement. The reasons are stated for your signature. The Advisory Committee took a vote on that on 12/17, this past Friday, to recommend we present it to you to sign up.
Okay. Is that something we can take a peek at? Can you get that?
Do you want a copy?
Yeah, I don't know if we have another.
And it's too submitted, too.
Thanks, Bill.
They have a signature on the back.
So, the fact that the...
It was in draft form.
Sitting Advisory Committee approved it. I think I'll trust.
Do you want to read this, or?
Yeah, and their counsel. Obviously, our counsel, which is Peter Epstein, that we hired, has gone through this.
Yes.
With the Advisory Committee, and...
Yeah, just so, if you could pass it independently, we could all read it, but, or if you wanted to read it aloud, or?
Yeah, our attorney, Peter Epstein, as Anthony said, provided it to us in draft form. We reviewed it. He then provided us a copy in non-draft form, final form, and there you have it.
I'll read it, just so that the Board can hear it, and the public can hear it as well. Town of Littleton Statement of Reasons for Preliminary Assessment of Denial. On Monday, December 6, 2021, the Select Board, as statutory issuing authority for the Town of Littleton, Massachusetts, voted to issue a preliminary assessment of denial of Verizon New England, Inc.'s Verizon, parenthetically, April 29, 2019, request for a cable television renewal license. Verizon's final license dated December 11, 2006, expired on December 10, 2021. The Select Board hereby issues the following written statement of reasons in accordance with 207 CMR 3.063, detailing the reasons for its preliminary assessment of denial. The town issued and sent an informal request for proposal, RFP, in the form of a renewal license to Verizon on September 30, 2021. Representatives of the town in Verizon subsequently discussed the town's RFP/renewal license in a Zoom session on October 13, 2021. At that time, Verizon's representatives committed to sending a written response to the RFP/renewal license to the town no later than October 27, 2021. Notwithstanding that commitment, Verizon failed to send any response to the town before the December 10 expiration of the final lease. The Select Board of the Town of Littleton, Massachusetts, as issuing authority, hereby signs this statement of reasons this 20th day of December, 2021. Littleton Select Board, issuing authority.
Okay. I concur. We should sign it.
All right, so...
So, is there a motion?
It was discussion dependent, so the motion would be to issue the following...
As read?
As read.
Okay, so I move that we issue this Statement of Reasons for Preliminary Assessment of Denial, as read by Mr. Decost.
Circle.
Move, seconded by Mr. Knox. All those in favor will signify by saying a roll call vote. Mr. Galavy?
Aye.
Ms. Napoli?
Aye.
Ms. Nortos?
Aye.
Mr. Knox?
Aye.
I'm in favor as well. So, we'll sign this now and hand it back to you, so that you have some...
We'll just press on.
Full court press. Thanks, Bill. Next up, we have Police Department Chief. Do you want to come forward?
Request to use ARPA funding to hire a new police officer, as discussed previously. Good evening, Board. Thank you for having me this evening. As you're aware, in October, I came before you and presented Kim Mattson, who was our recent hire. Kim has been doing a great job. Along with Kim, we had a part-time police officer, Zach Merchant. We sponsored Zach to the academy. He has been working, he has 160 hours right now currently during his training process with us. He's doing a fantastic job. As of January 1, we're losing four reserve officers because of an unfunded mandate during police reform. So, we obviously know what that means. If we're losing part-time certified officers, we need to find full-time certified officers. I know this ask, on the fly, isn't very common and is frowned upon, but we need to start preparing now for what's going to come in the future for us, and that's one reason I'm here for you tonight. I'd like to have the Board appoint Zach Merchant full-time for us now.
Chief, can I ask you, with the four reserve officers?
Yep.
What mandate?
So, police reform is no longer allowing the use of part-time officers. So police reform, um, is no longer allowing the use of part-time officers. Hold on a second. Let me rephrase that. They have to be certified officer, which means we have to send them to what's called a bridge academy. The bridge academy is six weeks long. Unfortunately, the second part of that is we have to produce them. They have to have 2,500 hours of patrol time in the last five years. And they have to have 2,500 patrol hours going forward. We don't have that option under contract obligations to allow our reserves to work that many hours, nor have they ever worked that many hours on patrol. They're obviously, they're obviously there to help us with details, cover parades, help out with town functions, but they don't actually work in the crews are on patrol. Just one or two of them actually do that are full certified officers. Um, with them leaving, it's gonna leave us a big gap. And of course, you know that we're probably gonna be moving forward within a year for the sewer project. So we need to start getting ready for that as well.
And where did, where did they come from?
Police reform that was passed in July 1.
Steve, let me just know. Okay. Um, this is something, I mean, you presented this, presented Zach back in, back in October with the, with the expectation that in January we would-
Yeah. Um, like I said, I, I brought Zach before you in October. I put him on part-time. Um, Anthony and I had spoken in regards to ARPA funding, if it was there, wasn't there, if we were gonna use it for this because we didn't actually fill this position last year like we wanted to. Um, moving forward, I think this is a, a great deal for us. Um, the quality and quantity of candidates for a full-time police job just are not there. And I would hate to lose someone as young and bright as this kid to a different town because eventually he's gotta take a full-time job somewhere. And there are several different job offers out there at this point in time.
How much we got to spend?
Excuse me?
How much will you have to spend?
So base patrol one is probably about $58,000. I believe we built enough into the contract, uh, into our budget this year to cover the overtime and training.
You have a question?
Yeah, go ahead, Paul.
Yeah. Just a question to the Chief. Um, I asked this before when you brought us, uh, brought this up to us rather earlier in the year, but, um, remind me, is it your anticipation that beyond the, uh, backup costs associated with this one position that going forward, uh, some or all or part of this will be funded through a shift from, um, what you are now budgeting for overtime or reserves and that, you know, the, there'll be some compensation for that and the additional costs?
That's correct. We have a 10-
That's correct.
That's correct. We have a $10,000 line item for reserve officers, which we won't be using that line item. So it'll be offset with that. And as part of the overtime, it'll cut down. Uh, we'll have, um, four officers, uh, on almost all shifts except for the midnight shift. Therefore, we can go down to a three-man minimum on the shifts. Uh, so it'll cut out one of the overtime, uh, part of the overtime, I should say. I can't promise anything as to what might happen with any kind of disaster or whatnot. But, um, but yes, you're absolutely correct.
Any other questions? Mr. Glavy?
No, thank you.
Um, I just, I mean, I'm, um, as the chief mentioned, he had brought this before the Board in the past. I think it's definitely difficult in, um, at this time to attract and retain qualified, um, police officers. And we have somebody before us who's committed to our community. Um, and public safety is a, it is a priority of, of the Board certainly. Um, I don't see why we wouldn't approve the request, um, to use these fundings for this purpose. I know that it's out of cycle, so to speak, or out of the ordinary, and we fully recognize that. But I think in light of the, um, of the situation and the need for qualified police officers, um, it's something that the Board should certainly consider.
Well stated.
Comments? Do you have any comments?
I think she covered it all.
Yeah, I think just had one thing, just, um, when we met Zach, Kim and Zach on that night in October, um, stand-up guy, put himself through the academy. Yeah, we sponsored him, which meant he, you know, we, a lot of things, the cruiser and the service weapon and the certain things that, as a sponsoring department that we provide him with. But he sent himself through the academy.
He, he paid the financial obligation, which was $5,000-
Right.
To put him through.
So it shows the level of commitment and the fact that he has kinda hung in there with us as a part-timer, um, with the expectation.
Turning down, he's already turned down two towns because he wants to say get a little.
That's, that's-
Shows Zach-
Those are the kind of people that, yeah, we're looking for. So I think I support it as well. And, um, is this something that we'd, looking to make a motion to?
I would love you to make the motion to appoint tonight. I know that Zach's not here. Um, but I can bring him before you again at your next meeting. I know he's more pretty busy. But if you'd like to appoint, I can get the paperwork started.
January 1st or?
January 1st would be great.
We do have a motion in the packet, too.
The motion in the packet is to just grant, um, Chief Bernard the authority to hire. But-
So Board wishes that however you wanna move forward, I can bring Zach before you again. Um, I, if we're here and we're, we have a motion on the floor, you know we're gonna hire.
So I think if we go with the motion as it is, it gives you the flexibility. If for some reason, um, Zach-
Turns us down.
Maybe he, it was an offer too good to be true and he, he ended up saying, you know, I, I hung in there as long as I could, Chief. Um, but it gives you the flexibility to still hire. And it's not specifically Zach. Um, and then when you do come back, we can make it a more formal appointment of Zach specifically. That's my opinion.
Yeah, that makes sense to me.
I think it makes sense, Jim.
Okay. I moved that the select board vote to grant Chief Bernard the authority to hire a new police officer using ARPA funds for the remainder of fiscal year '22 and all of fiscal year '23.
Second?
Second.
Motion's made, second by Mr. Knox. All those in favor, it's a roll call vote, signify by saying aye. Mr. Knox?
Aye.
Mr. Nortos?
Aye.
Ms. Napoli?
Aye.
Mr. Glavy?
Aye.
Mr. DeCoste's in favor. All right.
Thank you very much, Board. And again, I do recognize this is out of cycle and I apologize for that. I just, I'm pretty, very appreciative of moving forward with this. Thank you.
If you are able to get Zach, make sure he understands that you went to bat for him.
He owes us.
He owes us the next 30 years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's appreciated. All right. I believe, next up, we've got public input. And I know there is an individual who is interested in speaking. So I just ask, Gino, if you wanna be heard as, as, for public input, please come to the microphone, introduce yourself. Do you, do you wanna be heard for public input? I know that you had something to say when you came in earlier.
Any other one wanna speak for me?
He, um, I can take care of it later on. He, I, um, didn't realize the Board had started and he just wanted to extend the invitation, but I'll take care of that at the end.
Okay. You good? Thanks, Gino. All right. Any other public input? All you other publics? Joe, have you seen any other public input?
Uh, no, I don't have anyone raising their hand.
Keep forgetting to check that.
I know.
All right. Um, for member updates, Joe, do you mind if I start with you?
Sure. Just a, um, quick update on the process of this, the screening committee for the, for the five chiefs. And, yeah, they can jump in anytime we want. So we went through the, the process. We had 15 applications that, that came forward. Uh, as of the meeting we had, where we sat down with the five members of the committee, we went through a ranking system of zero, one, or two. Um, there were, uh, at that time, it might have changed by now, but we thought we had five candidates that we're gonna interview. Um, and like, we've all been through this many times. It was easy when you looked at it. Some people didn't have the qualifications there. And actually, there was a couple there that were poorly written. And you were saying for, going for a top job, you, you should be more, more polished. But we had some that were gonna be interviewing. I think one might be next week, and the others will be the first week of January. Uh, that, we followed on the 15th, is it?
Yes, that's correct. Yep.
With the assessment center, we had MRI come in and Bob was there. And was it Bob?
Bloomer, yes.
Yeah.
From MRI.
He come in, he was of, of great assistance with, um, spelling out what he thought, uh, the process should be. Gave us ample opportunities to say, this is what we want and don't want, that type of thing, um, for the assessment center. Um, in that time, when we're all done, um, we're gonna evaluate as that committee to find out if we, we have someone to bring, uh, different candidates to bring forward to the Board for the, the final interview. But if you can add on anything there?
That's pretty much it. I mean, I think the next time we, we talk about it, we will have gotten the results of the assessment center and we will have interviewed the candidates and like kind of synthesized that to bring, hopefully bring this Board a final candidates. And there are some strong candidates.
Okay. Great. Anything else, Matthew?
Um, yeah, I have, so I have a TDR working group update. Um, I followed up with Paul. Actually, if you remember, he couldn't unmute fast enough at the last meeting, but he and I chatted for quite a while, actually, and he gave me some good input. Um, so Marin and Amy Green have both agreed to be part of the group. Um, I have a call with Will Picker tomorrow to discuss AgCon's involvement. Um, there's a woman named Kristen, and I hope I pronounce this right, Bill Maroud, um, who was, who's the Act in Town Planner. She was an interim planning board. And, um, she agreed to be part of the, of the group. Um, Rick Findley from Conservation Trust is gonna be in it. And I'm waiting to hear back from the Economic Development Committee, Mr. Chair.
Sure are.
And, um, Master Plan Implementation. I, I called Laura, Laura Yates and asked her if they wanted to be part of it. Um, and then Marin also said that MAPC, who did the presentation and the original draft bylaw, may have more, um, hours to give us possibly, but definitely can help us, um, discuss it. So Bartlet, Harvey, and I are gonna have a list ready for appointments at our January 8th meeting. And we're gonna try to have our first meeting that week because we need to get moving on this. I have a couple of questions. Where, where are we at with the new director of Public Works?
Um, that's, we have to have Michelle put together the resumes. Um, the ones that I saw, and there was only a few. So I don't know if she has them somewhere else. So we have to circle back with her.
Okay.
Hopefully there's more because if no, we may have to go over again.
Um, and then I was curious about, last meeting, we talked about the staffing with ARPA funds, like getting a new list together with, for that. Is that gonna happen like at the next, like in January?
I think it was our understanding that it was gonna be part of the budget process and that, that's something maybe once, once you had the budget books, you know, that would help determine what the expanded positions, um, uh, could be and then what could be funded through ARPA.
Okay. That's fine. I just remember talking about it. Didn't know what the follow-up was.
So the budget books would do out by the end of the calendar year. And then, um, then there's some decisions that have to be made.
Sounds good. That's all I have.
And then they'll be defensible by the department heads through the whole budget process.
Right. And then be during the, the budget process and those meetings, you'll have that opportunity to ask questions and fill, figure out which positions you wanna prioritize as using ARPA. And something you may not be able to do. It depends, you know, what, what we can do.
What's sustainable.
Right.
Um, okay.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Um, can you ping me again on that?
Sure.
Thanks.
Send you another email.
Yeah. Ms. Napoli?
I was just, I just wanted to ask the Board, at a town meeting in October, we had approved the personnel bylaw based upon dissolving the Personnel Committee. Part of that included, um, appointing a Personnel Advisory Committee. Do we need to wait for the state to approve, um, the bylaw changes that we, that were voted in October before we can move forward with the advisory committee? Cause, or, or can we, is that something that we should be looking at now?
The changes to the personnel bylaw don't go in front of the AG. They're, they're local power. So we don't have to wait.
We don't have to wait on that? Yeah. So I was just thinking, we had discussed implementing the advisory committee. We might wanna start looking at that. I didn't know what the Board thought of that.
Put that on the agenda for the 10th?
Sure.
Does that make sense? Have that discussion?
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, maybe ask Michelle to be present?
Yeah. That's all.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Glavy?
Uh, just as Mr. Chairman, the last, I think the last time we met was the beginning of Hanukkah. And by the time we meet again, we will pass Christmas and New Year's. So I hope everyone in Littleton has a wonderful holiday season.
Thank you, Mr. Glavy. If you were here, you could have a cookie.
[laughing]
We'll save you one. Easy, tiny tale. Um, yeah. So all I really have is, we, we almost had a snow event. But, um, speaking of DPW, they, they, they were out in force treating the roads to make sure that it was as, as minimally impacted our commuting as possible. Um, I will say that, that there's, there's highway signs up all over the place looking for plow contractors. Just put it out there. If anybody, um, has a, a plow and is looking to make some extra money, or if they have, you know, one of the kids has a plow that looking to make a little extra money, that town is looking for plow contractors. And I think that they've got some flexibility, um, to bring people on board. There, there are some requirements that you have to have and there's some insurance that you have to have, but it's worth reaching out to Steve, uh, Steve Wooden at the Highway Department if you are interested. Uh, or you can just look at the highway sign, I'm gonna go to Russell Street and, um, reach out because every community I drive through, they have those big highway signs up saying they're looking for plow contractors. So it's like trying to get service at a restaurant or, you know, it's, it's touching all the service industries. But, um, nice job by the Highway Department and just hats off and kudos to, uh, Raldo Human Services today. They, they, no questions asked. There's, both feet jumped in and helped out some folks. And, um, I know that they do it on a daily basis, but it was nice to, to witness it. And I just wanna give them kudos.
Oh, you're here.
All right. So next up, we have, um, item number five, annual license renewals. Common VIX, Automatic Amusement Devices, Entertainment, Lodging Devices.
So this is the part two of the annual license renewal process. And, and just what you said, it's all those non, uh, non-alcohol licenses. So, um, the list was included in the packet. There is some follow-up, um, minor inspections that have to be done, but just like the liquor, you know, it would be, the Board's approving it and I'll make sure that it follows up before we issue the Common VIX. We would need signatures on it tonight. And Paul, if you could stop by to get, put your signature on, on those licenses.
In the morning.
Thank you. Um, but that's it.
Anybody have any questions about any of the-
I enjoyed that.
Any other businesses that were before us?
No.
No? Still trying to find these automatic amusement devices.
Well, there's chip shots. You can go play golf.
And there's the, uh, I guess the mini merry-go-round at Market Best.
Is that right?
All right. Um, then, a motion?
Uh, move that the select board vote to approve the annual renewal of all licenses as attached for the calendar year 2022. License issuance contingent upon satisfactory inspections and submission of all required documents, fees, and payments of municipal charges to be reviewed by town administrator.
Second.
Motion's been made, second by Ms. Napoli. Um, all those in favor, roll call vote. Mr. Glavy?
Aye.
Ms. Napoli?
Aye.
Mr. Nortos?
Aye.
Mr. Knox?
Aye.
Mr. DeCoste's in favor. Thank you very much. All right. So, got us cruising, huh? Get, uh, review and discuss requests for additional space from the vacated Rubenor Library space. So discussion dependent. It's, uh, we all had an opportunity to walk through the space. Um, after it was vacated, uh, the library moved into our beautiful new space across the parking lot. So Anthony, is something you're gonna kick off or?
Yeah. So we, we had, um, three requests that came in, uh, something that I think you heard from Ed at a, at a previous meeting. Um, so you have Ed's and then Alicia Day, who again, you heard, she put together a PowerPoint presentation. And I think she's remote. Then she's, will happen gladly, uh, go through that if the Board would like. And then the third was also in the packet from the last meeting with the friends of the Council on Aging's looking, um, for, Nancy Levine, I believe, is also remote. And they're looking to get space for their thrift shop. So if you, you know, we have everybody here, if you wanna hear from them and what their thoughts again are, we could start with Ed.
Yeah. Ed, you're here. If you don't mind coming to the podium.
Ed Mullin, Berlin Commissioner. Yeah. So you can see on the floor plan that has been submitted, what we'd hope to do with a space in the lower level or otherwise known as the first floor. Um, the memo that we sent along with it really clarifies the reason we wanna be down there. One is we need the space. We also noticed that we track a lot of debris into the building, you know, being onsite and the contractors that come to see us. And we're all the way on the third floor currently. So we make a mess of the building. So if we're on the first floor and we have our own entrance, um, we also open up the earliest of any department in town. Um, instead of having to open up all of Town Hall just so somebody can get to the third floor, we'd have an egress and access at the lower level that's separated from the rest of Town Hall. Um, so those are the benefits there. The also, the other benefit is that, you know, as the department grows with the reorganization, there's space available. Um, you know, we bring in our own, our own health agent. in our own, our own health agent, the assistant to the town planner, and the assistant to the conservation agent. There's, there's space for cubicles in the middle of that space there. Cost-wise, we're not looking to spend a lot of money. I mean, we're doing no high-wall construction. We're not bringing anything to the ceiling. There's not going to be any light relocation. In the office that's currently serving the Veterans Agent, I've communicated with John Orofsky about that, and, you know, I also communicated with Liz over at EHS, and she said that they have temporary space for him now if he was to move today, and they plan on having more space for him should Park and Rec move to second and third level of the library, that they've gained space and they'd make room for him again. And then, of course, the hopes of the new building, that he'd also move over there with them. So, and I brought John up to speed on all of this as well. Any questions?
The thought is to have John move with other human services in the new building?
So, in the new building, I think it shows some space in there. If not, there's space where EHS is now, and there'll be more space once they, if they're able to move to the lower level, and if Park and Rec ends up getting second and third floor of the library. So the domino effect occurs and space becomes available, and everybody can gain some elbow room.
Real simple question for you. If you occupied that space, with the stairs on now, how would you, would it raise, if you made the block that off, so if people come in early, they couldn't move on it through the building?
Yeah, so that's a great question. I actually had a great conversation with Tim over at Park and Rec, and he's identifying these gates that you see at a lot of MBTA stations and other places that are heavy duty, and they're, they're easy to pull across the front of the stairs there, so you can't access them. He was planning on getting one for the upper level, so we would only need that one, but if we wanted to identify it as not accessible, we could put one at both levels, top and bottom.
The offices on the north side, I know that the one that's existing is obviously floor-to-ceiling, but what about the Conservation Agent, Building Inspector, and Assistant Director, Town Planner?
Yeah, so in this scenario, they would be, to meet building code requirements, because it's not sprinkled, the walls would have to be less than 24 inches from the ceiling.
So how, what are you planning on doing, like?
At that level, or?
25, 4 and 1/2 inches from the ceiling, or?
Correct. So we, I was speaking to Nick Waller over at Light and Water, and they're going to be going through some office renovations, and they have five cubicles available that are high-wall, and give us that clearance. And, you know, communications with other building owners in town that are going to be doing full renovations have, you know, mentioned that they'd be willing to make office, you know, donations to our office for furniture or cubicles. We're trying to be cost-effective here and not spend a lot of money, so, but carpet and paint's all we're really looking for, and Wi-Fi.
So the other nice thing about that is the ADA trigger.
Yes.
You know, if you're just, if you're plopping down, using existing space, not moving walls and, you know.
Right.
That kind of thing.
Yeah, we don't trigger that. Improvements needed throughout the town.
Correct. Not structural or utilities, not that kind of thing.
Excellent point. Thanks, Chair.
Any other questions?
No, I appreciate the detail.
Yeah.
It's very helpful, and for all the points that you raised in your memo, it makes sense.
Thank you.
And actually, good. I'm all set. Oh, yeah. Mr. Glavy? Good?
I don't have a good question. I would echo what Ed just said in terms of, I appreciate all the detail in the presentations we got. I also appreciate, it sounds like that our departments are all trying to work together, and that's not surprising, but always heartening to see.
Agreed. Good deal.
Thank you both. Thanks, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, so bring Alicia, Alicia in.
Currently, she's not on with us with Zoom yet.
Is Nancy?
Yeah, let me bring Nancy in. Hello, Nancy. Can you hear us? Currently, your microphone is on mute.
How about now?
That's awesome.
Great. You don't have my picture, though.
It's a little disappointing, but we'll make do, Nancy.
Well, I got you to look at, so that's pretty good.
I love her.
Wow. Tough room.
I can't thank you guys enough for putting the Friends on the agenda. We've been waiting for a long time, and I know you're probably sick of hearing the thrift shop, thrift shop, thrift shop, but it is extremely important to not just the Friends, it's what the Friends do for the town of Littleton. Some of you are new to the Select Board, so the thrift shop started in 1992, and it was in a closet on the first floor where Park and Rec is, and it was a closet that Park and Rec turned into two offices. Then the, with the onset of COVID, we had to shut down the thrift shop for obvious reasons. They, we couldn't use it anyway, and it was turned into an office for EHS, which is greatly appreciated by them. One thing I wanted you to know, besides other things, is that, as you know, the Friends with the Council on Aging, we're restricted to only use our funding for seniors. That's not the case for the thrift shop. The thrift shop was available as outreach, besides sales to regular people, to anyone who locked in the door. Me, the family who needed clothes for their children, a husband who was going on a job interview and didn't have a suit to wear. I mean, the list is quite heavy. Brides getting married needed a dress, a mother-in-law, a mother of the bride, high school kids used it for their plays. Kids, it was just, it just overwhelms me as to what the thrift shop does and did and can do again. EHS uses that thrift shop a lot. What also came as a surprise to me is that other towns use it. And when the thrift shop has their $2 to $3 sale every six months, the place was emptied. People would come in and they would buy bags and bags and bags of the stuff, no exaggeration, and they would ship it overseas to families overseas who didn't have anything. So the thrift shop did a lot on that aspect. Without the funding for the thrift shop, we're sort of in a lockdown of our own. Funding has been very difficult. Last year, when we did a town line, one including businesses, I was shocked that we only got 2% of the money we received was from businesses. I thought it would be a lot more than that, but it wasn't. The people in town were generous, and what has happened in the past, and which I hope happens again in the future, money that was made in the thrift shop and the yearly funding that we did supplemented our income, so we wouldn't have to touch money in the bank. We were able to support the Council on Aging's needs. We, I think it was last year, we are helping buy a van for the Council on Aging. So I'm hoping that there will be room, room at the inn. It's a good time of year to say. I hope there's room at the inn. It was created jobs for people who were looking for the tax write-off programs. The camaraderie that was there, too. People just to go into the room and see what was new. Maybe they could buy something for 50 cents, or maybe $5, you know? It was just a very special place. I am not kidding you. I am still getting emails and phone calls. When is it going to open up again? Then we involve other businesses in town, people who wanted to donate good quality merchandise for us to sell, and we would take it on. I have people already volunteering to work in the thrift shop, run in the thrift shop, and we need to get the ball rolling again. So our hope is to have space in the old library that will give us the opportunity to do what we did very well before, but we will need room. Before, we had a closet on the first floor. We're hoping for more, and perhaps the large room where Park and Rec is will be available, or even the Cooper Room. Besides the room, we need a place to put the stuff, and so we would need some sort of storage area, which we had before. I am so hoping that you will reconsider and give us back the thrift shop, because we will be an asset to you. I promise you. Any questions you have for me?
Nancy, thank you very much. This is Chuck. Thank you for your presentation and for your passion. It's, it comes through in your voice, and I'll open it up to the members of the board, see if anybody has any questions.
Nancy, this is Joe. One simple question. How much space do you actually need, do you know?
Oh, I, you don't want to know. Now, please, room 103 would be perfect. Seriously. It will give us a big room. It gives us storage area. It gives us a little kitchen, give people coffee when they come in the door. But I know that's not possible. So to have a room, the room that's, the Park and Rec has, the big lodge room, that's a little bit smaller than the room that we had before. But if we had the storage rooms that are around it, just across the hallway on the side of the elevator going into the multipurpose room, that would be very good also, because I can't think of another place except the old library that has space. And, but thank you for your question, and I hope you will give us back our precious thrift shop. Anything else I can answer for you?
I mean, I'm 100% in favor of finding a space for the thrift shop. There's no doubt in my mind that it's been a boon. I'm wondering if, I wonder if the, closer to EHS is a better option, closer to the multipurpose room or the dining area? I haven't looked at how that area is going to be laid out, so I don't know if there's any space that might work there.
The room that she's referencing, if you walk in at the other entrance, it's, you see the elevator right to the right where they made the teen center, and they had a TV and ping-pong tables. Yeah, so that's, that's the room that she's talking about when she references that area.
Continue past that room. There's some, some built closets in the hallway. If you go past the elevator and go to take a right into the multipurpose room, there's some doorways right to your left.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
For you to stay well.
Right. They actually made an office. Tim made an office in there, so.
What is in there now?
Tim's office.
Tim's office.
It was storage.
It was storage, yes.
Sure. I mean, you know, in a way, I think that the EHS and, and the COA should work it out with the Friends, I guess. I mean, I, I want them to be here, and I don't know if we are the right people to determine exactly where, what room the thrift shop goes into.
We just need, we need to make the determination of allowing them to be in a municipal building and operate a, basically a 501(c)(3).
Yeah.
So, and I think, I'm with you, Matthew. This is something that they did for years, and it serves a number of people, to Nancy's point, not just by raising funds, but the opportunity it gave folks to purchase items, clothing, gifts.
Yeah.
You know, from the store. So it does serve the whole community. It's not just for the funds that they raise, but it's also for the folks that actually shop. It's just a matter of trying to figure out those logistics.
Paul Glavy has a question.
We usually leave him for last, Nancy. Mr. Glavy, please, please go ahead.
Thank you. Question isn't so much for Nancy or the Friends. I'm absolutely, completely in support as well. It's more for the, for the town officials, department heads, and whoever, you know, whoever's best able to present us with a proposal. And that's what I'm looking for here. I don't know if I'm missing something obvious or not, but especially with the people, you know, moving towards the open-up space, it absolutely could free up, you know, the requisite space to re-accommodate them, them being the Friends of the Council on, I think it's a very worthy and appropriate use in Town Hall. It's been proven so, and, you know, it's, years go by, I mean, some people that are around a while will remember where room 103 is now as a community meeting room for our board and others. Once upon a time, that was an independent daycare did business out of there. So it's not unusual to have private uses that are consistent with a mission being onsite, and, you know, that was a success story. They just became the victim of, of, you know, space crunch, which fortunately, we look like we're in a position to reclaim some of that. So I'm hoping the next time we have this topic, of course, soon, it's with a specific proposal to accommodate them somewhere.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
You bet. Of course, Nancy. And it's very much, I mean, it sounds like it's, all of us want to make it happen. It's just a matter of how and where. I do have a question for Mr. Mullin, if I could. Where the Vincent Cooper Room is now. Is that, it just says Vincent Cooper Meeting Room. Would you just leave it as a meeting room in your plan?
Yeah, in our memo, we state that we have no interest in that space for, for land use in Buildings Department.
The fact that that has exterior access for something like a thrift shop, that in the proximity of the proposed site for the Shattuck Center, you were mentioning, try to keep, you know, the spaces together. If it were across the park from a proposed Shattuck Center, that, that might be a.
That's true.
We're not going to solve all the problems tonight, but that, that might be another alternative, and there is storage directly behind the Vinnie Cooper Room. There's a couple of closets, and there's a kitchen area, to Nancy's point about coffee and that kind of thing for folks, so.
Thanks, please. One thing that was identified by the library is, with the Cooper Room, you could use it as meeting space because the rest of the building would actually be secure, so we could fob that. So one thing that we lack, and where we lost 307, was meeting space. So that is nice in the sense that the rest of the building, nobody would have access to, because Ed's door would shut, but they'd still have the bathrooms, too. So if that was, if that was a meeting room. So that's another consideration for meeting space there.
Also, $15 million library that has a lot of meeting space.
Yeah, I think, if I may, Mr. Chair, I think we're going to see a dominant effect, and I have to say, it's been a lot of fun working with the department heads, just in discussions, going through this, and the excitement they have. Well, if you move, then maybe we move, and then, oh, then they can move to, and it's just been an ongoing conversation. We're all trying to figure out what's best for everybody as we have these conversations. So it's been fun, and we're all willing to, to help each other get the best that we can for everybody in the building, so.
Yeah.
I think if you give EHS and COA a chance to talk to the Friends and, and find the best space, because maybe EHS moves all their offices down so they can serve the community better, and the space that was once the thrift shop becomes the thrift shop again, you know, and.
Perhaps.
But I think it's a good conversation for them to have with the Friends and figure out where they best land with the brands that they would have, should that space become available, so.
So obviously, I just think that if there were an exterior door, that where the thrift shop was before got very well-used, but I think that if we were able to accommodate some sort of, obviously, 103 has an exterior door, the multipurpose one has an exterior door. If we did it in the space that Anthony brought up at the previous Park and Rec area.
Yeah, those are all great.
Those are all exterior doors, so that there's the possibility, and to Anthony's point about using the Vinnie Cooper Room as a meeting space for the recommendations of the trust, I think Katrina might have mentioned that, or?
I'd really like to see EHS, like, show us a plan, like, similar to this one, about what's going to get reconfigured, and as you say, like, have them talk to the Friends and, and work out the layout and who. and, and work out the layout and who needs, you know, who needs what space.
Right.
Before we say, I mean, obviously, I think we're going to find a space. It just, I, I think that it shouldn't be us who decides where it is.
No, I agree. I, I mean, I think we heard from Mr. Mullin. We should hear from Park
and Rec. But I do think, as far as the friends go, it's a conversation to involve, um, COA, EHS with definitely.
Yeah, agreed. Nancy, if you're still there, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
And, uh, Mr. Chair, we do have Alicia Day with us, and then we also do have Mark Rambacher. Has his hand raised.
Tell him to put it down. Just kidding, Mark. We're going to hear from Alicia first, if we can, Mark. Is that okay? Great. Hey, Alicia.
Hello.
Are you under a bridge?
Are you under a bridge?
Well, yeah, pretty much. Uh, so we were not aware that the presentation was going to happen tonight. We've taken our staff out for a holiday meal, so we're out of the parking lot right now. Um, so we're going to be that, that we can, uh, getting a text at last minute. So, um, yeah, so we put together a presentation. Uh, I did have a memo that went along with it. So, uh, the reality is that, you know, we're really wanting to be able to use the second... Same as you.
Hello.
Um, so we're able, we really would like to be able to use the second and third floor of the library space. Um, at this point in time, we really feel like that would be a great space for us to inhabit, uh, just as an interim, uh, before we're able to move into something that's more suitable for where the Town Hall needs to be able to go. Um, so at this point in time, you know, with our space that we have down at 33 Shattuck, we only have a 20-foot by 20-foot programming space that's dedicated to us. Would you guys mind going back to that slide? Thank you. Much appreciated. Um, so, you know, this limits us with the programs that we're able to do for the residents, uh, just for the fact, especially that we're in COVID right now. That room is still not appropriate to be able to offer programs, um, and be able to spread out reasonably. So, um, you know, some of the really amazing possibilities that could come out of us being in that space is that we would be able to, uh, create a very successful teen drop-in space, especially on the third floor, because everything's kind of locked into one place. Uh, there's potential for pre-cave program if, uh, if needed. And then there's also the ability to possibly assist Tiger's Den. They have a lot of overflow issues, uh, at this moment. So there's a lot of people that are waiting on a, um, a waiting list to be able to get into that program. So they're struggling with childcare at the moment. Um, so, you know, we would work with the current space the way that it is. Uh, we could do a majority of the work that ourselves, uh, which is really great with minimal renovation. Um, and, you know, we could still use that main entrance area as a welcome-to Town Hall. You know, we've kind of been doing that already over on the 33 Shattuck side when people come in. So, uh, that's not anything that's new to us. Um, you know, and it would be a really great space for us to be able to inhabit. And so we're actually able to create some sort of community center that can hopefully house us, you know, whether it's together or, you know, uh, just recreation, maybe working with some of the other departments that hadn't had space issues handled yet. Um, so the positives of this is also that it could help out Elder and Human Services immediately, because the plan would be that, you know, we would move entirely out of that first-floor area, uh, and be able to give that space over to them. Um, so, you know, they'd be able to have the executive staff, so Liz and Nicole, uh, even Amy can be down there on that first floor, which allows seniors to have that access on that first-floor level, which is really important to them. Um, that they'd be able to have some storage space. I don't know if any of you have, like, been in the area with Amy, but she has her office with all of the portable toilet stuff in her office as well. So, you know, they're kind of using storage and office space at the same, uh, ability that we are, too.
Sounds convenient.
Um, so 123 could still stay a small programming space, because the sink is in there. We renovated that. It's really great for that, uh, type of use. And, you know, like I said, Amy could be down there as well on that first floor. So that kind of gives you an overview of some of the positives that will come out of the usage of us moving into that space for the library, for both ourselves and for Elder and Human Services.
Alicia, thank you very much. And I appreciate you looking at, you know, how, again, collaborating with other, with other departments, and how, um, EHS might be able to use space, and, you know, how that would be productive and beneficial for them. I'll just open it up to the board. If they have any questions.
My question is more general. Is it, we'll have to sit, obviously, it is like, one thing moves to another, moves to another. We're going to have to sit down, not only just talk to Park and Rec and see what their request. I mean, this is a big request for two floors. Uh, but what's going to happen to the third floor and things like that? So maybe in the future, we hire a professional to come in and say, this is what could be used for this building. I don't know. It's just, um, things have to be done, or should be done. But the thing I think, yeah, for Alicia, she made one statement, I thought, I don't know whether you meant it or not, but like, this is going to be a temporary space.
Right. Ideally, the, the idea that has come through in some of the space needs and through the Town, um, Master Plan, is that there is, uh, and there needs to be a place for the Recreation Department to be able to have facilities. Um, and that's something, you know, we had talked about in the space needs before, about potentially trying to combine the senior center and a community center together, but that's not an option that's, you know, we're going forward with at this time. So this would be a good space for us to be in for, I don't know, would you say, five some years, till we can really develop a plan for the town and figure out what it's going to look like?
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. So the, the floor plans that we had on here, um, that we went through before, just kind of give you an idea of how we'd look out, uh, using the space. Um, that main floor, we would definitely be able to put all of our, uh, staff in one space and be able to have off a space off to the right-hand side when you come into that main door. Um, we could definitely use the space off to the right to do some fitness spaces, whether they be dance floors or, um, fitness studios, things like that. Um, you know, it could be a bigger multi, um, multipurpose room, similar to what, you know, we have on the other side with 33. And then there's the ability to have that really great classroom space as well.
Sydney, any questions?
Um, I don't have any questions. Alicia, thank you so much for the detail, um, that you put into your presentation and your proposal. Um, Alicia, I mean, she's come before us before and talked about the demands on, on the Parker Recreation Department, based upon the growing population of Littleton, um, the needs of the demographic that they serve. Um, certainly, parents needing daycare, kids needing extra support after school. Um, you know, a place for, for kids to go and, um, participate in the programs that are offered by the Parker Rec. To me, are just amazing. And, uh, I, I think it's a PowerPoint presentation, maybe two years ago or last year, Alicia, that you gave really took me aback about how many programs and services that you do offer. Um, so I certainly, I have no qualm whatsoever about the need that your department desires for extra space, and I appreciate the detail that you put into, uh, this presentation for the Select Board tonight. So thank you. Um, and just to, and Joe, I just wanted to comment. So we do have, through the space needs, we did, um, spend some money having plans drawn out for this whole building and different scenarios of what we could do with it, um, and what it would look like, what it would cost. That was a few years, a few years back. So we do have that. We do have all of that information. Um, I think certainly, we're looking at a phased situation here. Um, we have two, three departments, um, or two departments that came before us, and then we have the Friends of the COA. Um, it, it makes sense to me personally to move, um, the Land Use Department to the first floor. And I certainly think that the second and third floor of that space would be a great, uh, use for the Park and Rec, who are currently certainly very underutilized with space, um, currently. And especially, like I said, the need that they, their department has, the strain on that department with the services they offer is something. Um, so I'd like to move forward with their proposals personally, and then we can take a look at the EHS, COA, once we see, once, what it will look like when those spaces are vacated. Um, and then go from there and see, okay, what else can we move around? What else can we shift, um, to, to provide some short-term solutions? That's my thought.
Mr. Glavey, I'll go to you in one second. Just, Mr. Mullin just came to the podium, so...
If I may, Mr. Chair, I, um, again, when we, if we're able to move down, and when we vacate the space that we have, again, that is also additional space that other departments can look at, um, whether it's the finance team, whether it's, um, HR, whether it's the executive office that needs more space. I mean, we're all looking for a little bit of elbow room, so I think we're just going to continue to see these conversations. But if we make the first move, you know, with, with Park and Rec, then I think the others can follow it behind us and update you as they see the spaces. From the building commissioner's perspective, I can certainly assist with how we maintain a low-cost move for everybody, so we don't trigger that component.
Yeah, yeah. I think the other, looking further down the road, the other thing to consider is that if, so if these moves, something like this were to happen, um, and just kind of do some rejiggering, and EHS is able to move across the parking lot, the schools are busted to the seams as well, and then it just, it all, you know, the pieces of the puzzle will open up. And, you know, to Alicia's point, I don't, I don't know that it's going to be three years, five years, 10 years, but at some point in time, we, you know, we're always looking at, um, what...
What's next?
Yeah, exactly. Whether it be at some sort of recreational facility, or a new Town Hall, or what, what it might be. We don't know. But...
Well, we have to start somewhere.
Exactly. And this is the, probably the least, um, expensive option for our taxpayers, is to repurpose what we already own or what we're, you know, the existing space, and doing things like Mr. Mullin mentioned, um, by getting, whether it be from the Water Department, they have some partitions and things like that, um, or maybe there's some other, like, we just get, when Amazon took over the buildings down on Taylor Street, um, the IBM building's going to be vacated at some one time. Maybe we can leverage our relationship with Mr. DePoli and then get some of the, the office furniture that's in there to try to help do some of these build-outs. So, who knows? There, there may be some opportunities for us to do some of that kind of collaboration, the public-private stuff. Um, thanks for that clarification. Paul, did you have any questions or thoughts?
Thoughts, yes. Uh, it, this has been a very thoughtful presentation, and, uh, you know, it, it underscores what I said earlier, that the, the way that our departments are working with each other is, is, uh, very encouraging, and it's been a bright prospect. Everybody gets to grow a little bit. Um, now, and we know that it's not a, a long-term solution for anybody, but in the short term, it's a promise.
Excuse me. You can't see my hand raised, because I don't have a camera. Um, but I do have a question. Is the multipurpose room going to disappear? And what about the senior diner? Where is that going?
No changes on...
Nothing's, nothing's proposed right now, Nancy.
No changes proposed.
I thought, I thought Ed wanted the whole first floor.
No, no, of the, of the old Rubenor Library.
Oh, okay, got it, got it.
Um, so, I, I think, um, to echo what Ms. Napoli said, I've always been impressed with what Parks and Rec does with the space they have. So Alicia, I think the problem is now the expectations are going to be so high. There's no way. No, I'm just kidding.
Do you have what you asked for?
I'm 100% in favor of this. Um, was there any, is this, are, is, is it basically Park and Rec and the Building Department are the only two who proposed moving? Okay. I'm 100% in favor of the moves of both.
Well, we don't know what Mark, with his hand raised, is going to say. Want me to recognize him now?
Yeah, but just turn him way down. Just kidding.
Hi, Mark. Can you hear us?
Yeah, uh, Mark Rambacher, 205 Park Hall, and a library trustee. I, I have just a few comments. Um, I think, you know, Ed taking over the Building Department and Park and Rec taking over the floors is a good thing. As far as the Cooper Room, um, I think in the short term, and I mean, in the pandemic short term, we need to keep it as a meeting room, if we at all can. There is a severe lack of meeting rooms in town, even with the library. The library's rooms are booked constantly. The school's basically offline to groups for meetings now, so there's very little places, very few places for people to meet. So if we could open it up just for the short term, you know, six months or whatever for meetings, that would be good. Um, and as far as the rest, we're, the library's willing to, trying to help clean out what's left in the building, but we kind of need help. Um, partially, we need to know what to do with the stuff, and what, who wants what that's left there, or how we can dispose of it. So, um, there was talk of, like, highway, getting a dumpster for metal to take stuff in, and we can call, like, household goods, get rid of some, some of the stuff. But we don't know who, what the funds are going to want furniture, and how we're supposed to clean anything out. So, uh, we need some guidance on that front.
Yeah, that'll, that'll come, Mark. There was, there was a lot of conversation around that, and that'll, that'll definitely come. Thank you.
But if we could keep the Cooper Room as a meeting room...
That's, that's good info, Mark. Appreciate it.
There's, yeah, like Girl Scouts and everyone, they don't really have a place to meet outside of the library right now. The police station's been more or less offline, though I think it's coming back. Um, getting, you know, the fire station, everything, it's really hard to find a room. So we are severely lacking for that in the Cooper Room. In the short term, you know, um, would be a good solution.
Thank you. All right. This, this was a good discussion. This is, uh, I think a productive discussion. I think that, uh, I think the next step is to find, maybe, maybe get some cost estimates, or, you know, like, what, what do we need in order to make it executable? Um, and as far as furnishings and things like that, you know, how do we make it a reality? I don't know if the...
No, I agree with you. And we need to come up with a plan for cleaning out the existing space.
Yeah.
We did have some discussion about that, but we need to...
Do we need to look at requests of the school department and other departments?
For the space, you mean?
For, for, any space in the whole building, when it would...
I think a memo went out to all the departments.
Yeah, we, we asked all departments.
Schools.
Yeah. Yes, by knowledge, schools was included in there, and, yes.
Okay.
Excuse, Mr. Chair, are we taking up any more public comment?
Let's, I mean, I think we've all agreed we should do this. Let's, let's go forward with it.
All right, let's go forward with it. Public comment about this particular topic? Is that what you mean?
Yes.
Um, what's the pleasure of the board?
Is it someone who's already spoken?
No.
Then it's up to Mr. Chair.
If it's very brief, I say sure.
You let Mark speak, and he's, he's a trustee, though. It was, you know, it was Jermaine. Is it a two-minute conversation, or...
You can let him know that he has two minutes.
He, okay. Go ahead, George.
Hello, Mr. Sanders. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you. Can you hear me? Oh, yeah.
Yes, we can.
You're getting a special privilege here, Mr. Sanders.
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Yes. Do you have, you have some comments relative to the conversation we're having about the repurposing of the library space?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, certainly, I have some comments I want to make here with regards to this.
Okay. Is it something you can do in two minutes?
Yeah, since you want to limit me, and I've said it to somebody else that's not quite up to par with me, but nevertheless, I don't like when the town do stuff like that. You go and put a limit on it, you put it on from the beginning, so everybody has the same treatment.
So, Mr. Sanders, we don't, we don't typically take public comment on every single item on the agenda. The last speaker was actually a member of the library trustees, which is why he wasn't given a limit.
What's the difference? I'm a citizen in this town.
Right. That's why we have the public comment section.
Okay, forget it. I don't have nothing to say.
You can, you're more than welcome to speak, Mr. Sanders.
No, I'm, I'm just saying to you, Mr. Chairman, is that when you do something like that, I've been looking at here when we came to the public, uh, coming here, you didn't limit and say what's what. But nevertheless, uh, I just wanted to make the comment about Park and Rec. I think, uh, Park and Rec deserved the opportunity to move into space that's now available in the Town Hall building, which would actually satisfy a lot of the needs that they have at this time. And I think with some distance in the future here, that the second floor and the third floor would, uh... and the third floor would complement them to the idea of the programs that they can put in and have up there for the town as a whole. And I just think that the consideration of giving that to them up there would be good, and I think what the Building Department wanted to move down on the first floor there, I think at least these two large elements would satisfy the need that would then give you what space is available in the Town Hall building. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sanders. I think your sentiment is echoed by each one of the members of the Select Board, and that's appreciated. All right. So what do we need to do in order to move forward?
We could, we can work on cleaning out that place and come up with a plan for that, and then.
Let's come up with a date of, maybe we try to get that done before January 10th? Is that reasonable?
I think to come up with a process, because we'd have to dispose, just like we buy, according to 30B, we have to dispose. So some work would have to be done. We're talking to OSD and the controllers, the.
So what about this? Can I adopt you? When we walked through there, there was literally one thing that the library said they still wanted, and it was the old antique uprights for the cast iron or brass, or some uprights for some bookshelves, or something like that. Other than that, they said, fair game. Is there a process that we can go through to try to tag things for, if there are any departments that can utilize desks, office chairs, things like that?
Yes.
Do we do a quick inventory, and then find out what people have on their wish list this year for furnishings, or what have you?
Yeah, we can.
And then try to check off those lists.
Absolutely.
And then from there, we can come up with that process for household goods to come in and take other furniture that's not going to be used, and that kind of thing. And then a metal dumpster, certainly, I think is something that we can do with our roll-off container that Mr. Stoddard procured for us a couple of years ago. And we can use the Highway Department to do some of that disposal, so we don't have to go with 30B.
Mm-hmm.
If we're keeping it in-house, and then just reassess at that point. Is that a reasonable expectation for us to be able to get some of that taken care of by the 10th? Mr. Stoddard.
We just want to be careful and have a conversation about where we're going to park that dumpster, snow removal. I mean, it's definitely important.
I would anticipate, Chris, and maybe I'm speaking out of turn here, but I would anticipate that if we, I don't even know that we'd have to roll it off the truck. We could probably back it up outside of the building and find some way to get a chute from a local contractor or something like that, and go out some of the windows, right into the dumpster, if we're able to back it up under a window.
Yeah, that would work. Like I said, I just don't want to have to leave it for a number of days, because you know how that would go. That would be our luck, we'd get three personal calls.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
I mean, we can move with it, obviously, if it is going to sell, we just.
No, it's good consideration, and hopefully the ground stays solid enough so we could back up close to the building. I don't know, any other thoughts, or? So we just got to keep the ball moving.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. Next up, we have the 25 mile per hour townwide speed limit. You guys, Park and Rec, did you guys have something else to say about that?
Yeah.
Yeah, Chuck, the only thing, just to the end, was we did speak to Sam about some of the stuff, if all of this gave fruition that we were looking to possibly hold on to. I have that in an Excel sheet, so I'm not sure if you want us to forward that to you or whomever, but it was some various furnishings and a couple of other things that were located in there, including two TVs they used that we would repurpose for the gaming and the teen rooms.
That's right. I think we'll be able to coordinate things out of our office, as far as what the departments are going to need, what they've wanted. Some have already eyed a couple of things, and then the resultant will be able to work with Chris and deal with the procurement to identify how to remove.
All right. So it's going to be taken care of from the Town Administrator's Office, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders.
You bet. All right. No other hands raised before we move on to 25 mile per hour? It's, but this has come up a few times, and we deliberately, a few years ago, Matthew brought it up again recently, and asked if we could have it on the agenda. I'm getting credited for it, but.
Sorry.
It's something that other communities have done. I personally asked the police chief what his thoughts were, and he's supportive of it. Chris, I'm sure you have an opinion relative to, we're going to have to put up some signs at the entrance of Littleton.
Yeah, we put a list together. Joe, do you have an email? I believe it's 30 signs. There's approximately 20 roads, and then 10 on and off ramps that we need. Like, when you come onto Taylor Street off the highway, you need a sign there. And there's about 20 entrances, half, or 20 different roads that cross into town.
And the last time we talked, you said it's around 150 bucks a sign, is that still the case?
I believe so. We do have an estimate we provided.
Okay.
Yeah, they estimate just under $5,300.
Now, if you have roads that have posted at different speeds, do those signs come down?
No, no, we would not want to take them down, any of them. You want me to walk up to the microphone?
Please do this.
Sorry. Chris Stoddard, DTW Director. I'm very early. For now. For now. Our intention would be not to take the signs down. There are a number of roads in town that have posting orders from the state, so this 25 mile an hour speed limit would not overrule those. We wouldn't add more in town, but we wouldn't intentionally take signs down.
So the signs, you said you had 20 road signs that you needed to replace, is that something?
No, to install.
To install, oh, okay. All right. Got it.
Yeah, so. A number of them are on state roads, which we technically actually need to get permit for, so there's a process.
One of my references was Bruce Street, that's now posted at 30. Could that be changed to 25?
I think.
It's a town road.
Yeah, technically, yeah, I believe so.
So the signs that we would have at each of the entry, the 20 entry points to the community would say, townwide speed limit, 25 miles per hour, unless otherwise posted. Correct. So on Bruce, if we decided that it's nicely paved and you can rip around those bends really nicely, that 30 is okay. Or we can just take those signs down, and it's implied that it's 25.
Correct.
And maybe use those signs somewhere else that we think 30 is appropriate.
Correct.
But as far as the state roads are concerned, they dictate what those speed limits are.
And then actually take, like, Taylor Street does have a posting order, so the state has dictated what we put where.
Even though it's not a state road, right?
Even though it's not a state road, yeah. And there's a number of them, the chief, actually, I just talked to him, he has the list of what roads we have posting orders on.
I think we have as well.
So it basically comes down to about $5,300.
And time.
And the time it takes to install the signs.
And the winter's not ideal.
Yeah. Well, let's not do it in the winter, then.
Yeah. I mean, we can, it's just.
He's waited three years, I don't know if three months would matter.
It's slightly more complicated to do them in the winter.
Yeah, I don't, maybe the right time to do it is when kids are going back to school. You get it out there over the, over the end of the school year, and then over the summer, and then gives Highway Department an opportunity, over the summer, to get the signs up.
Well, yeah, we have to go through the permitting process, which will take, it shouldn't be complicated, but it's a matter of having to put a map together, a location, send it to the state, get their feedback and approval.
Maybe have a goal of September, if it's the board's pleasure to do this. But there was, from a departmental standpoint, there wasn't any pushback. Chief Bernard thought it was a good idea. But I spoke to him about it. Let's talk to 25, but I'm trying. Right?
I will say that we do get a number of comments, or from people requesting additional speed limit signs. So by taking, if we took 30 away, are we going to replace it with 25? Are we just going to kind of broad-brush, say, no, because you see them coming into town? It's just a thought, because the more we take away and change to, say, 25 from 30s.
There might be a public education piece that we can take care of and work with, the light department, something like that, to do some sort of public education.
We don't necessarily want to keep, because if we then say, okay, we take the 30 away, well, you're going to give me a 25, that $5,500 number goes in the trash can balloon from there, so.
I think that's what we, I mean, we've been talking about this since 2017. I think that was kind of the conclusion that we came to. You know, you're talking five miles in certain areas, you know, how are we going to educate the public? How are we going to get the signs? What's that cost going to be? Was it really going to make that big of a difference by implementing this? What was, what was the, you know, what's the expectation that we feel is going to be accomplished by doing this? Not that I'm against it whatsoever, I just, I don't think that, personally, that the residents that are pushing for it are going to see this, the result that they anticipate that we're going to get, compared to the time and energy we're going to have to put into implementing something like this. And that's just what we, as a board, had talked about last time we visited this, we visited it many times, so. I mean, I'm fully in favor if the board wants to finally pull the trigger and, you know, move forward with this, but I'm just, I'm just putting it out there now in some some states.
Skeptical sentiments on it.
Yeah, exactly.
I mean, I think a good first approach could be that we just install the new ones, $5,000 worth, but not necessarily pick and choose and say, I'm picking on Bruce Street, I apologize, Joe. But not necessarily go and say, okay, this one's going to be 25, and this one's going to be, so you just broad-brush, okay, then now the town is 25 unless otherwise posted.
And then reevaluate.
Then you can reevaluate as it comes up. I mean, if somebody calls and complains, or questions, we can forward to the Town Administrator's Office, and we could bring it up as a discussion point with the board. I mean, I think that might be the simplest approach tonight.
Don't go into it, Paul, it's a.
I'm not going to. Paul, you.
I got to admit, I had forgotten that we did not pull the trigger on this last time around. I think we kind of already reached this point of general agreement on giving it a shot and having the arguments re-passed here right now. I guess I, I certainly support us taking the vote, if it hadn't already been taken before, and going about the implementation, following one of the direction, Chris, is what he said a moment ago, is made sense. Let's start with the broad-brush approach and fine-tune it after the fact.
Does it make a lot of sense?
Yeah.
Okay, good. So the motion is to schedule a public hearing to amend Chapter 205?
So, yeah.
Did we have this public?
I thought we had as well.
We had a public hearing a while ago, so I'm not quite sure if that public hearing would still.
Qualify.
Qualify, or if we needed to do another public hearing, allow the public input, and then go forward from there.
So there was also the article in 2017 that was Chapter 218, so are we, is there an additional chap, like, law we have to alter? I don't understand.
No, not to my knowledge. We accept it out, so I think that we can move forward.
So we can implement without any further action.
Right.
Because we've already taken the, we've already taken the votes, we just haven't enacted it.
Right.
Can we just confirm that?
We can confirm it. We can confirm it. So I guess the question is, do we want to go through it one more time, the public hearing process, or just implement?
I don't think we go through the public hearing process.
Yeah.
It's a waste of time.
We've done it.
Yeah, we've already done it.
Which is fine.
Just to make sure that, yeah, we're checking all the boxes. Yeah, okay.
So let's do it. So do we need a motion?
I think we do, it's already taken.
No, I make the motion that we adopt the 25 miles per hour as.
As previously.
Okay.
And unless otherwise posted.
I move that Select Board vote to adopt 25 miles per hour for town roads unless otherwise posted.
Second.
Do we want to put any kind of, any kind of language in there about the 2017 actions that were taken, or no?
I don't think it's necessary.
Okay. Moving second, Ms. Napoli, roll call vote, Mr. Glavy.
Aye.
Ms. Napoli.
Aye.
Mr. Nodas.
Aye.
Mr. Knox.
Aye.
Mr. Coase is a favor. All right.
Thank you.
Yeah, just, I guess we just confirm that we're in good shape, and we can.
We'll confirm what we can, so, yes.
And if we need to bring it back to a vote.
We can public hearing.
All right, thank you all. Reserve fund transfer?
Yeah, I'll go through this quick. So as you may recall, last year, at the end of the year, we had two AC units that were out on 33 Shattuck Street above the School Department, and we need to make the repairs. At that point in time, we asked for a reserve fund transfer to do that. It was granted by both the body, as well as the Finance Committee. The work was done. What happened was the invoice came in after the year-end, it got closed, that money was never encumbered, put to a PO, so it just fell to free cash. So we need another authorization to use the reserve fund transfer to pay this bill for this, for right now.
And it was less than originally.
It was, yes, it was, yeah, it was less, correct.
Any thoughts, questions, ideas?
No.
Motion. Move that the Select Board support the reserve fund transfer in the amount of $23,600 to the fiscal year 22 Facilities Management Services budget.
Second.
Move second by Ms. Napoli, roll call vote, Mr. Glavy.
Aye.
Ms. Napoli.
Aye.
Mr. Nodas.
Aye.
Mr. Knox.
Aye.
Mr. Coase is aye. Thank you. TA, ATA updates?
Do you want to take the?
Sure. So the board had previously considered this request, but there were some questions regarding the maintenance of a six-foot strip. So before you, again, for consideration, signature of the quick claim deed for what's known as Parcel X. As you may also recall, at Special Town Meeting, we transferred the Hurragut property from the care and custody from the Select Board to the Conservation Commission. One of the concerns was the placement of a trail, this was as part of the Planning Board's original approval. A trail was going to be placed within that six-foot now because of the adjacent property. That trail can be moved off, and therefore, this strip really can just stay as open space, and it would be staff's recommendation to sign the deed, so we can finalize transfer that was undertaken at the 2020 Special Town Meeting.
Any questions?
So, I'm sorry, are we signing the deed for all of Parcel X?
Correct.
And it's just, you're just letting us know that this six-foot strip is part of that parcel?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions?
No.
Motion?
Sure. Move that the Select Board vote to sign the quick claim deed for parcel of land located in Littleton, Middlesex County, Massachusetts, being shown as Parcel X on a plan entitled K Estates Definitive Plan of a Subdivision Off Grimes Lane, Littleton, Mass. for K Land LLC, and is authorized by October 17, 2020, Special Town Meeting, Article 20.
Second.
Motion made, second by Ms. Napoli, roll call vote, Mr. Glavy.
Aye.
Ms. Napoli.
Aye.
Mr. Nodas.
Aye.
Mr. Knox.
Aye.
Mr. Coase is aye. Thank you.
Is there just going to be like a six-foot, like, wall of shrubs there, because no one's going to maintain that, or what's going to happen?[1678.13] going to maintain that, or what's going to happen?
It'll just, it'll just overgrow in time. Thankfully, it's up a, it's up a steep slope, so it's not like it's going to be maintained.
That's what, too. We're going to plant some bittersweet in there. Award of a contract.
No, please, no.
The next item is an RFP that Joe had worked on, and it's for HVAC maintenance and repair contract, so we're ready to award that contract at this point in time.
Any questions?
Nope.
Yeah, two applicants, so...
Correct. In my memo, I detailed the process where we had a number of, two site visits, had a number of companies come. Ultimately, we had two firms submit proposals. The winning bid went to Cooling and Heating Specialists. I got great recommendations, basically towns that have been using them for 10, 15 years, and they couldn't do their job without that company. So I feel very confident that we have an excellent company that responded.
Yes.
Motion?
Yes, sir.
Move that the select board vote to authorize the town administrator to sign the contract with Cooling and Heating Specialists Inc. out of Newton, Mass. for on-call and routine HVAC maintenance and repair services for one year.
Second.
Motion made, second by Mr. Glavy.
I got one in.
Not really, but I gave it to you. Roll call vote, Mr. Glavy?
Aye.
Ms. Napoli?
Aye.
Mr. Nodhouse?
Aye.
Mr. Knox?
Aye.
Mr. Coast is aye. Thank you.
The last thing on our agenda is a, Joe and Marvin have been working on the, reviewing the new multifamily zoning requirement for MBTA communities that the state came up with last week, so, Joe, do you want to summarize what you and Marvin?
Sure. So we're in the process of reviewing the guidance documentation that DHCD recently published, and as part of that, they're also offering some technical assistance to evaluate our existing zoning bylaws, and that's a great opportunity to see if maybe we already have zoning in place, namely the revised, or sorry, the new language that we just adopted at special town meeting for King Street, see if we already meet the provisions. Basically, the state is requiring that we have at least 50 acres set aside for high-density residential at 15 units per acre. That means 750 units need to be built to be compliant with these revisions to Mass. General Law 40A, Section 3A, and this is the minimum standard. So it's not only something Littleton is going to have to meet, but other towns that may not even have a commuter rail station. Foxborough is actually going to need to satisfy the same thing. So by having technical assistance that's available, we've already had some reachouts through the planning office to take advantage of that, to evaluate our bylaw. I just wanted to make the board aware of this and encourage seeking technical assistance to help really identify what this means for a town and what changes, if any, we'd need to make.
Right, we're certainly hoping that through this, that we can identify that the increased density of 550 King Street can account for that, which would be a good thing. So again, that was always the discussion with, that's where the density belongs, that's kind of the perfect place in town if we were going to have it. So I think it's, would behoove us to take advantage and see if we can take that technical assistance, and I know the planning board will discuss it, and what we were just looking for is kind of just for the select board to recommend that the planning board take advantage of that, so we can determine how our bylaws will play out with this, with this new regulation.
Is that a curiosity? So is there any requirements that it's near a train station or not?
It can be near commuter rail, it can be near bus stops.
Right.
Okay, so any kind of transit stuff?
Correct. So there, I mean, there are towns that don't have a commuter rail. My hometown, we don't have a commuter rail. We have to do it. So, and also there's going to be a certification process that DHCD, you have to apply in order to be certified, so they're still developing this, but it's good to sort of be on the forefront as far as knowing some of the impacts it could be.
And certainly, we already created a nexus with the commuter rail shuttle from 550 King Street, so that's the direction we're hoping that we can be successful in that.
Well, I mean, we, I mean, through the master plan, you know, we identified two areas in town to develop where it makes sense, you know, Taylor Street, Foster Street, and the common area, right? So I think definitely getting technical assistance to really figure out which areas would qualify certainly makes sense, and it might not be, you know, all the common, it might be the common and commuter rail street, which is where we've been focusing our efforts anyways.
Correct.
In both areas, so maybe it makes sense.
And if we can get some assistance and help you and help the planning board, I think it's, I think it's...
Yeah, this is big news. It really is.
So some work to do there.
Yeah, okay.
Any other thoughts?
Anything for Mr. Glavy?
Um, I'm kind of sweeping, I'm surprised that, I'm surprised by it. Has anybody heard anything about this before? I mean, this has, in short, appeared in a packet. I hadn't had any inkling of the state direction on it, and I'm just curious from Anthony or Joe or whoever else whether they've heard other communities reacting to it. I think we're well positioned to deal with it, you know, but better than other communities, I mean, in a lot of cases, but it could have an impact on a lot of towns that aren't, weren't planning on this.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. It's so new that I haven't had an opportunity to talk to my colleagues to see, because we only got it, that was the first we saw in Tupac. We never, you know, we had no inkling that this is what they were even thinking about. Let's, Marvin, you have other news or how other communities maybe might be?
Thank you. Marvin, Two Hill Town Planner, we knew that the information was coming out. What we didn't know is that there would be a hard number, you know, 750 units minimum, but honestly, it makes sense, and a lot of communities will be going through the same process together, because Littleton has the offer to be one of the test cases, Arlington might be the other one, and Littleton has the offer as a commuter rail community.
Yeah, that, part of the January, legislation was approved back in January, beginning of the year, January 2021, but they didn't identify density, they said 15 units per acre, but they said a reasonable amount. What they never defined was what was reasonable.
Right.
Wednesday, they said 50 acres was reasonable. That's not reasonable in my mind, but that's what the state said.
Like, regardless of population or square, or square miles of town or whatever.
Correct.
And I assume it's too early for MMA to have had any kind of opinion on this. I imagine by the time the conference rolls around, there'll be the talk of...
Yeah. There is a public comment period, so it was just published, and they are receiving public comment between now and March 31st. So one of the ideas is this technical assistance will allow us to understand it, but then also as a community, we can provide educated comments back to the state and DHCD.
Okay.
Okay. Ready for motion?
I am.
Sure. Move that the select board vote to recommend that the planning board seek technical assistance to evaluate how the Littleton zoning bylaws comply with the Department of Housing and Community Development's draft guidelines under recently approved MBTA communities legislation.
Second. Motion made, second by Mr. Knox, roll call vote, Mr. Glavy?
Aye.
Ms. Napoli?
Aye.
Mr. Nodhouse?
Aye.
Mr. Knox?
Aye.
Mr. Coast is in favor. It's unanimous, I think we only have one more item on the agenda, which is our minutes from December 6th. Any questions or comments on the minutes?
I believe they are complete and accurate.
So nailed it.
All right, I move that the select board vote to approve the meeting minutes of December 6th, 2021.
Second.
Motion made, second by Ms. Napoli, roll call vote, Mr. Glavy?
Aye.
Ms. Napoli?
Aye.
Mr. Nodhouse?
Aye.
Mr. Knox?
Aye.
Mr. Coast is in favor. You can motion to adjourn.
I move that everyone have a happy holidays, Merry Christmas, and a Happy New Year. And I also move that we adjourn this select board meeting, the last one of 2021. It's been a wild year.
Amen to that. Our next meeting is December 10th, and as my colleague, I'm sorry, yeah, it's, we're going back in time. January 10th, and from all of us, I believe, Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, Happy New Year, be safe, and...
I'm going to second the motion.
Do it.
Second.
Motion made, second by Ms. Napoli. It's a roll call vote, Mr. Knox?
Aye.
Mr. Nodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Napoli?
Aye.
Mr. Glavy?
Aye.
Bye.
And Mr. Coast is an aye, so take care, folks, be safe.